Think about it.[2.11][2.11](laughter)
We just passed Valentine, so we were doing a promotion for Valentine. So, we're gearing up for spring cleaning right now. That's what we're doing. But I started when I was 20, so I've had the business for eight years. And my story is, I dropped out of college. I couldn't do higher education. I just couldn't cut it. And looking back now, I'm actually not convinced that I have a high school diploma, but cleaning houses was an option for me at 20-years-old. And I have this crazy passion, like, I love to clean. I'm a person who loves to clean. And so, I was cleaning houses, and somebody said, like, "Amy, you should make a business of this." And so, I tried. I really tried. For six years, I was not only doing the technical work, but trying to run the business. And I was bringing in partners to help me clean. And it was, like, you know, my brother. It was a disaster. So, when I walked into the doors of the SBDC, I didn't have any sort of formal system for tracking our clients, for being able to schedule, to... I was scared of taxes. There was all this stuff that I didn't know, having no experience, having not gone to college. And so, over the past two years, they immediately plugged me into the small business management classes, and I started getting immediate advising, because I needed lots of help. Because I think what the reality is, is the advisors saw something in me. They saw a passion, and they just needed to help point me in the right direction and give me the tools and resources that I could immediately start applying in my business. And so, for what that looks like for us today is that we have an incredible system that tracks our clients, does scheduling, does payroll, dumps it into QuickBooks. We pay taxes. It's amazing. And the part that... And I never thought we would be able to... I would even understand what that is. So, I've learned about our business entity. And the biggest hurdle for me was, how on earth am I going to hire employees? Because I'm the technical person. People want Amy to come clean their house. How am I ever going to get an employee to do my job out there? So, now, we have a robust hiring system, and we have a training program that gives folks the tools that they need in order to be successful in the business. And the greatest compliment I get now is that my employees, my sparklers, are better cleaners than I am. We've had clients that long that say, "I like Kristen better."[151.31][151.31](laughter) So, that has been the success of working with the small business, and I lean on them a lot. So, I get a lot of advising from them, because it's so hard being an entrepreneur and going through everything that we go through. So much of my personality is intrinsic to my business, so it has to succeed for me. And so, I lean on them a lot, because I know that they believe in me. And one thing that Tammy said that was so useful, and I heard this at the very beginning, was, "I was so wrapped up in, 'What is my business going to do? How are we going to be successful?'" And she said, "Amy, your business is just a vehicle to get you where you want to go in your life." So, today, we're building a business that could be franchised, that could be sold. I could actually take a vacation at some point. Not in the near future, but, you know, soon. And that's... I wouldn't have had any of those tools or resources without the SBDC. And I'm just sitting here feeling incredibly grateful. And it's an honor to share my story.
I think this deserves a round of applause.
Yeah.[214.12][214.12](applause) How much is a house that's approximately 948 square feet?
Why is the city attorney beginning to perspire something?
That is neglected. Congratulations. Just a very inspiring story, and keep at it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We now will hear from our two other invited panelists. If they would please come forward. Do we have two more? John and... I have too many papers. I apologize. John?
Joanna.
Joanna.
And Joanna.
Joanna.
Joanna. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
That block of wood moves forward.
A barn?
The block of wood moves, so you can move it forward a little bit if you need to.
So, I'm John Haynes, Executive Director, Mercy Corps Northwest. And I'll be very brief. You know, I'm here... I'm predisposed not to come in here and speak, but I put on a tie, really, to support Joanna and this vision for this collaboration. I think we do need deeper, broader, more substantial collaboration to address some of the economic challenges we face and opportunities. Joanna's a great example of somebody that, one, could get in here this morning, and, two, is building a micro-enterprise that started from scratch, and is in a traded sector. She's selling all over the United States, employing people in Portland. And I'll defer my time to her, and also just applaud the partners that have pulled us in. We're not driving this partnership or collaboration, but really are pleased to be involved with this group, so thank you.
But I do, before we hear from Joanna, want to take the opportunity to you personally and to also to Mercy Corps Northwest for the work that you do on a micro-enterprise basis and a whole host of other ways. Your international work sort of eclipses a lot of the work you do in your own backyard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna.
Well, I'm very honored that John invited me to come. And actually, the last time I was sitting here, I was a project manager for PDOT. And I was really inspired to start my own business back in 2006. It really, really tugged at me. So, one night, I developed a business plan, and I started Four Seasons Container Gardens. And we design and install container gardens in Portland in businesses and residential properties, and I love it. What I fell into was a big problem, and that was the weight issue on rooftops and decks for these containers, where they get so heavy, because you're putting so much soil in there and just the weight of them, that it was really creating a big problem. So, when I didn't find anything out there that I liked, I went and I invented a product called Packing Pearls. And it's a lightweight filler for pots. It's recyclable, reusable. It lasts for years, and can be used over and over again. And as I invented that, I sat there going, "Well, I need some cash," you know, for the raw materials and everything. And so, I was working... I was going through a program at the SBDC. And they helped me develop a business plan, and they took me over to Mercy Corps Northwest. And this was in a time where no one was giving out loans. I mean, no one. I mean, none of the banks were. This was in December of '08. And I presented my business plan to them, and they believed in my product, and they liked what they saw, and they gave me a business loan to buy all the raw materials and everything that I needed to pursue this. And I have a patent pending on it right now, as a matter of fact. So, I'm quite proud of it. So, basically, what happened this past year was quite incredible. We were featured in Better Homes and Gardens. We were awarded an award in sustainability at a very important show for independent garden centers. And we were also published in a garden book for not only our designs, but also for Packing Pearls. We have... I've secured distribution in Canada, and I have sales to Australia and requests from Great Britain for this product. So, I didn't realize... Here, I thought I was, you know, solving a problem for my clients, and I didn't realize how important this problem was worldwide. And I also now have vendor contracts. We've been put on the vendor list for construction projects in New York and the Midwest. And locally, which is what I'm really most proud about, is I purchased 90% of my materials from the Portland local businesses. And I employ seven people right now for Assembly, along with the developmentally disabled, disadvantaged clients at Edwards Enterprises. They help put the kids together. It's a wonderful relationship that I have with them. And in 2010 alone, my sales increased by 300%. So, I'm very thankful to Mercy Corps. I came to them for a loan, but they... And the SBDC, they gave me so much more. They gave me their vote of confidence, which meant the world to me. And I come to them, and they have wonderful programs that they set up that I always am engaging in, because there's so much to learn, you know? As the previous speaker spoke, there's just so much to do and learn, and it really makes me feel like I'm totally not alone. And I'm very excited, because we're starting to go through another growth spurt. So, I expect to see more, hire more people in the Portland area, and hire more raw materials. And just in closing, my... The most wonderful vision I... Experience I had, one of many, was when I first went to order... I developed a product called Drain Shields. And I went into the local company who makes them for me, and I shook his hand. It was the first time I had purchased, you know, something that I had invented and he made. And I shook his hand, and I looked around, and it really dawned on me that I was really having an effect, you know, on these people's lives. And so, it's been a great experience, and I'm very excited to be here. And I just want to thank Mercy Corps so much and the SBDC for everything they've done for me. Thank you.
And where can people find your product online?
Well, I have brochures here, if you'd like.
That would be great. Would tell our five listening people watching on TV, if you would...
Oh, yes. Well, it's www.packingpearls, P-A-C-K-I-N-G, pearls, P-E-A-R-L-S, dot com. And you can order there. We also sell to local garden centers, to which there's a list there that has that.
Congratulations. I think another round of applause.[647.54][647.54](applause)
And since I think possibly not everybody will stay for the entire fascinating proceedings this morning, I want to note that in the winter budget adjustment that we'll be voting on later, the mayor has put in $150,000 for small business working capital. So, we are not only recognizing your accomplishments through this proclamation, but also adding more money, because that's a pretty impressive number, $7.8 million for the investment that was made in previous years. So, thank you very much for all your work.
And more to come. So, thank you. All right. The City Council will now come to order. We are not offended. If you need to get back to business, you can just pick up and leave. We really appreciate this very much.[693.82][693.82](knocking) Today is Wednesday, February 16th, 2011. It's 9:30 a.m. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning.
Can you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Leonard?
Here.
Adams?
Communications is the first order of business. Henry, the first tab. What's your name?
Item 146, request of Richard L. Meyer to address council regarding raising property taxes.
Mr. L. Meyer. Yes.
Good morning, Mr. L. Meyer. Welcome back.
The adult bankers, brokers, and barons of Wall Street decried accountability and mismanaged their businesses so badly that they caused a massive disruptive and painful recession in our country. The adults running America's biggest car companies avoided accountability and mismanaged their businesses so badly that they, like their Wall Street brethren, also needed to be bailed out by us taxpayers. Closer to home, the adults in charge of the Portland Public Schools plead for a bailout to deflect accountability for their mismanagement of public money. After years of adult mismanagement of public funds by the Portland City Council, it cried for public safety and bamboozled just enough voters to pay for their fiscal sleight-of-hand and budgetary cowardice. Public monies that should have been regularly budgeted to the Fire Bureau Maintenance and Capital Replacement were surreptitiously diverted to other expenditures until the bill finally came due. The Portland Public School, seeing success at covering up the Fire Bureau's fraudulent financial failure, saw a winning strategy. All their scheme needed was a change of slogan to "For the Kids." This issue is not about kids. It's about adult mismanagement of public funds. Every argument against the PPS tax increase is based upon this fundamental fact. Our demonstration in front of Portland City Hall today will send several messages. One, the Portland Public Schools, the City of Portland, Multnomah County, and Portland's Legislative Delegation in Salem are put on notice that adult mismanagement of public funds includes, A, failure to include in an annual public budget true maintenance and capital replacement costs and unfunded liabilities; B, diverting any monies allocated to maintenance and capital replacement costs to any other expenditures; number two, raising new taxes in Portland, recognized as being one of the hardest-hit cities in the world by this recession, with the highest property taxes in Oregon, a state with more than 10% unemployment, is a very, very, very bad idea. The heaviest economic burden, as always, will fall on the poor and low-income. A group the Portland Public School Board has denied exemption, proving PPS's institutional opposition to progressive taxation. Democracy is not a spectator sport. We can defeat the outrageous and insulting PPS-proposed tax increase, but we need to take organized public action to do it. Please join us outside Portland City Hall today, Wednesday, February 16th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. to publicly encourage Portlanders to vote no on the PPS tax hikes in May. Bring sign, your lunch, and your sense of humor. Satisfy your need to do something to stop the adults who have mismanaged our public funds and now want us to pay for it again. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Can you please read the title for Communications, item number 147?
Request of Barry Joe Stoll to address council regarding Free Camp David W. Crowther.
Welcome back.
I'm Barry Joe Stoll. Free Camp David W. Crowther was my project, in the way I've pranked Portland for decades now. One of the things we did, you might remember, was we camped out on Pioneer Courthouse Square, because we were anticipating the gay pride parade. And there's an exception in the anti-camping ordinance, if you're waiting for a parade. I founded Free Camp David W. Crowther, and I named it after notorious Portland police scandal in the Portland Tribune. I just researched this online the other day. Scott Deppe, quote, "was convicted of using forged prescriptions to obtain narcotics." Deppe admitted that he and Crowther had brought drugs with them to the St. John's Club to plant on the bikers. Neil Gerhart admitted that he had fabricated information justifying the search warrant. Well, they cooked up this search warrant, and they went in to plant dope, and Officer Crowther was fatally shot and killed. We have a $50-million moth by Wapato Jail in this county. We have thousands of people sleeping outside. I've browbeat council to no end about the extrajudicial mugging that came as a consequence of my landlord bringing an eviction case, locking me out illegally, destroying my property, my research for my book, basically beating me out of a quarter of a million dollars. I'm not happy with it. So, I drew attention to the fact that we have a housing crisis. We have PGE Park turned into a soccer stadium, and we have hundreds of people sleeping outside right now in this weather. That's shameful, because we can house the Clyde sales when they come to Waterfront Park. So, I want to draw your attention to the fact that we have a statewide mandate to have an anti-camping ordinance. And that grew out of a case where Judge Gallagher heard the Norm and Norm Jr. I remember Norm Jr. came when I was working with student government Portland Community College to ask how he could do his homework, because he lived in the back of the pickup truck, which was their plight. And Judge Gallagher ruled that the anti-camping ordinance, the way it was in existence, was unconstitutional, and that 1995 legislature had a mandate that the municipalities like ours have a policy to address the social problem caused by camping on public property. There is an exception, however, for a permitted campsite. There's nothing stopping us from allowing people to have some semblance of shelter and dignity. The only thing that's stopping it is the absolute mean-spiritedness and the absolute bankrupt policies that you all know that I know all too much about. So, I would draw your attention to it. I'll give this to Carla, and I'll see you all. And by the way, the hotties, little hotties hand warmers are saving lives right now, and I would be ashamed... Ken Lloyd calls them up, and they know every year that he's buying them, because we have homeless people sleeping outside in this weather. Thank you.
Barriers, time. Time to...
Thank you.
And I'd also encourage you, because you do do a lot of research, and I'd encourage you to research how many... How much the local governments in the four-county area each spend of their own money on service... Nope, you're done with the mic.
I'm listening to you. I'm just letting you know that I'm listening to you.
How many...
With Mike.
How much money each local government, including county and cities within the four-county area, how much of their own money they spend on affordable housing and homeless services? Do that research, and come back and talk to me.
I'm sleeping outside.
Do the research. Come back to talk to me.
Come to my camp. You're welcome.
Do the research. We'll hear now from item number 148.
Request of David Yandel to address council regarding drug dealing on Sixth Avenue.
Mr. Yandel? Okay. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone have any item to pull from the consent agenda? I have, I guess, noted two have been pulled, 156 and to the regular, and 158 for an amendment. If you want to read those. Do you read those before we pull them?
Are we going to...
Pull them both, and then...
If we're going to take 150, the amendment, do you want to do that before?
No.
Okay. So, we'll read them when we take them.
Okay, great. Any other items to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Please call the vote on the consent agenda.
Fritz?
Didn't want to pull this, because I'm very happy about it. There's an... Item 153 is an intergovernmental agreement to accept $700,000 from Metro to create a concept plan for the Barbara Corridor. I do note that it has several thousand dollars in contract provisions, and I would encourage the Bureau of Planning Sustainability to engage neighborhood groups and community groups in those contracts. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have a time certain at 9:30 time certain, so we're a little far behind. Can you please read the title for ordinance, Budget Adjustment, item number 149?
Adopt Budget Adjustment Recommendations and the Supplemental Budget for the Fiscal Year 2010-11 Winter Supplemental Budget Process and Make Budget Adjustments in Various Funds.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Scott.
My name is Andrew Scott. I'm the Financial Planning Manager for the city. What we're considering today is the winter budget monitoring process. Again, we do three of these budget adjustments a year. We've already done the fall. This is the winter, and we'll do one in the spring come this May. The winter bump adjusts 43 funds by a total of $25.9 million. On the general fund side, it appropriates $2.4 million to capital projects. This was money that the council had set aside in the fall bump to deal with some immediate capital needs. It sends $800,000 of compensation set aside to the Police Bureau for hiring. This was also set aside by council in the fall bump, and we're now appropriating it to the Police Bureau. And finally, it makes a $222,000 net adjustment to the general fund contingency. About $727,000 is actually spent out of contingency, but $504,000 is put back in for that net, $222,000. We had a work session on this last week on February 8th, so I won't go through the details. However, I just want to note the major changes from the work session to now for what was filed. There were a number of capital program changes, and those are detailed in Exhibit 3, where we finally ended up on that after the council conversation. And then, finally, graffiti abatement was funded at $130,000 for ONI and $40,000 for the Police Bureau.
And discussion, and I have a minor amendment to propose for council's consideration.
They have an amendment also.
Why don't you go ahead?
The cable broadband request was unfunded. I've been able to reduce it from $55,000 to $45,000 by generous donation from Comcast to fund outreach to underrepresented communities. We had the kickoff a few weeks ago in this chamber, a couple of weeks ago, and it was filled with enthusiastic people from all kinds of backgrounds wanting to get this broadband plan done. My son teaches at Marshall High School, and he certainly experiences the digital divide there, where not all the students have access to Internet services, which many of us take for granted. And so, I believe that getting this plan done, which we'll then offer as a strategy for reaching that digital divide, is the best way to go. And so, I move that we fund the broadband cable request at $45,000.
For purposes of discussion, I'll second the amendment. Moved and seconded?
For discussion.
For discussion.
You'll note that I have not requested money to hire back any of the over 150 people laid off at the Bureau of Development Services, and specifically in areas dealing with neighborhood enforcement of nuisances, such as abandoned cars, abandoned houses, some of which have become attractive nuisances because of their long-standing vacancy, which are now housing according to particularly in North Precinct, drug dealers, drug users. And while I appreciate the sentiment Commissioner Fritz brings with this amendment, I don't think this is an appropriate time nor an appropriate allocation, given the variety of needs that we have at the city. I don't have a problem with the intent. I do have a problem with this coming at the last minute. It's not something I can support, given the needs that I hear from neighbors daily around the city about our lack of enforcement of basic nuisance laws due to lack of funding. So, I'd recommend that this worthy project Commissioner Fritz is supporting be rolled into the budget discussion for July 1st, as I plan to do in the request that I would like to make to restore some of our nuisance inspectors at BDS.
Scott?
The plan's already underway, and the council approved that. We want to get it done in a more expedited fashion in order to be able to start implementing the improvements involved in that plan into the Portland Plan.
So, the value proposition of doing it now, the biggest benefit is?
Just the excitement that's already been generated. Each of your offices sends a delegate to the steering committee, and I think it's a well-thought-out strategically efficient plan to deal with this important problem.
Okay. Let's... Please call the vote.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
No.
Adams?
Aye. Amendment is approved. My motion is to restore the ask on graffiti. My fear is that there's every indication that graffiti is on the rise. Our existing efforts are not keeping up with the increase.
So, I will just note that this does include $130,000 for ONI for graffiti and $40,000 for the Police Bureau. The bump that was filed.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you for supporting that effort. And we did have a conversation last week at the work session regarding whether this should be done in the general budget process. In talking with the mayor, the need is definitely urgent. And I think we're doing... With one police officer and one graffiti specialist in ONI, we've been doing well. We're still behind, and the problems generally get worse during a recession, and they do contribute to other nuisances in neighborhoods, the presence of graffiti. So, we have a multiple-pronged strategy to involve more volunteers, which, again, at the work session, we noted that the volunteer efforts have increased many times over the past year, and that that's been successful. It has to be partnered with city staff, doing the enforcement part, notifying property owners of their responsibilities, and also offering those volunteers to help.
So, if I... Unless there are objections from council, could the folks that are working most regularly on graffiti, please stand up and introduce yourselves? Marcia, that's you, all of you.
Officer Van Nellard, from the graffiti desk here.
Sorry. Quick, watch for the... That's a box.
I'm Marjorie Dennis.
So, thank you all very much for your work. This scares the heck out of people, and it is a crime and a blight on the city. And especially Marcia, how long have you had the position? Obviously, you've got a little bit of help, but the city relies on the success of you doing your job on this issue more than I think anyone understands. And I hope I speak for everybody when I say to all of you, "Thank you very much."
But, you know, we need help from Mayor.
Well, you're going to get it now.
Good.
Yeah. Any other discussion on the proposal in front of us? Um, any other discussion on the proposal in front of us? Okay, does anyone wish to testify on item?
Um, Mayor, I think we need to open the hearing.
Okay, according to the Oregon, according to the Oregon State Budget Law, ORS 294. dot 480, I open a hearing on the fiscal year 2010-2011 winter supplemental budget. Is there any member of the public who wishes to testify?
We have, uh, four people signed up. Please come on up. Amy Boggs, Marta Bones, and Bruce Silverman.
Amy was with, uh, proclamation.
And let's have Joanna Guzetta.
Welcome, glad you're here. You just need to give us your first and last name.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Bruce Silverman. Uh, I'm a regional vice president for Whole Foods Market, uh, Pacific Northwest, and I'm responsible for the stores in the Portland area. Uh, I came to, uh, just speak on, in support of, uh, the nonprofit, uh, grocery in New Columbia neighborhood. Um, our, our company's mission is to bring the freshest tasting, uh, freshest and best-tasting natural foods, uh, to our customers, and, uh, certainly part of that mission is to see those, uh, kind of products available in, uh, neighborhoods that are underserved. And, uh, I know the New Columbia neighborhood is, uh, in particular is an underserved neighborhood as far as, uh, grocery stores close by, and, um, I had the opportunity, I, I worked with the, uh, Food Initiative Advisory Council, and, uh, had the opportunity to meet Charles, who is, uh, helping set up this store in New Columbia recently, and, uh, we held a meeting at the store. It's an inspirational effort that they're putting on. I, I simply wanted to come as a businessman in town and lend my support to, uh, uh, the grocery store. I'm, I've, uh, personally told them that I'd be happy to advise them and help them, uh, you know, build a, a strong foundation for success.
Thank you, sir.
How's the Hollywood store doing?
In what way?
Uh, sales.
Uh, growing. We're, we're doing very well, and, uh, we're on a good growth curve.
Good, it's a great store.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, um, uh, this gentleman and his company recently did a cooking demonstration in Director Park, uh, teaching people how to do healthy food, and we had a, quite a robust turnout, and so we appreciate...
Did you help?
I ate, actually, yes.
He helped.
I think they're called Flash, we call them Flash?
Flash Kitchen.
Flash Kitchens, and they're doing it around the city, teaching people how to do healthy cooking.
That's great.
Pop-up cooking schools. So we do 12 a year.
We appreciate that partnership.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hi.
Morning. My name is Marta Bonas, and I'm the executive director at Piddick Mansion, and I'm here on behalf of the Piddick Mansion Society Board and Staff to thank you for your support. And since 1968, the collaborative relationship between the city and society has effectively brought the strengths of both to bear for the benefit of the mansion and thousands of local and national visitors. As you know, the society assumed responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the mansion in 2007. Since then, we've laid a strong foundation for basic operations and adopted a strategic plan that will guide our work for the next few years. As part of that process, we refined our mission statement to expand our focus from the Piddick family to Portland history. Our mission is to inspire understanding and stewardship of Portland history through Piddick Mansion, its collection and programs. Our strategic goals will help ensure the mansion remains a vital part of the community. These include offering in-depth experiences like our behind-the-scenes tour and Spring Break Kids Camp, updating our program for third-grade students so it meets current curriculum standards, making the visitor experience more interactive, working with the city to address the structural preservation needs, which is very important and particularly close to my heart because the mansion turns 100 in 2014. The budget request included in the winter bump will fund repairs to the terraces surrounding the mansion. The ground-level terrace causes me great concern because its stone railing is broken and eroded in sections, making it dangerous to thousands of parkgoers. I'm really pleased that this funding will ensure visitor safety, and also appreciate what it will mean for the city and society. As I think about the mansion turning 100 and what it represents, what it means to the city of Portland, I think of Henry and Georgiana's contributions to the city, and I know we're starting an excellent stewardship program to rehabilitate the mansion, which couldn't be achieved without the city and the society working so well together. So thank you for listening to my comments, not only today, but throughout this process leading up to today's vote, particularly you, Commissioner Fish, along with Zari Santner and Park staff, for being open to our concerns and exploring the best ways to address them. Mayor Adams, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Leonard, I'm grateful for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And Marta Bonus was recruited to this position, I believe, from Brooklyn?
Brooklyn.
Where she has a MFA?
No, I have my, uh, undergraduate degree in art history.
In art history.
Perfect.
And she is the executive director and works with a very strong board mayor, and, uh, a little-known fact is that the, uh, the Piddicks were not only involved with the founding of the Rose Festival, but Mrs. Piddick took a, an interest in housing and was, was one of the forces behind what we now call the Martha Washington.
Absolutely.
So they, they made a great contribution to our community.
And you were very nice to host our, uh, summer youth, uh, connect, uh, connected by 25 summer school students, and in talking to them, I can guarantee you that the, they'd never been there. They didn't know it existed.
Right.
They didn't know how they fit into its history, and so your, uh, your work on improvements for more educational programs is much appreciated.
It was really great to have them. I really enjoyed meeting them.
Marta, thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify? Carla, can you please call the vote?
Fritz?
Um, aye.
Fish?
Um, first I want to, um, thank, uh, Andrew and Ken and Claudio and the whole OMF team for the way they managed the winter bump process. This is a lot more complicated than you would think. It's somewhat anticlimactic when we get to this stage, but there's a ton of work that goes on getting all of this material prepared and the debates and the trade-offs, so I want to thank our, our stellar team for their good work. In particular, I want to thank Mayor Adams for having the vision to set aside $2.4 million for capital projects. The reality is, um, our biggest ongoing challenge is finding capital dollars. Um, and, and in a number of our bureaus, we're falling behind because of, uh, of the tremendous use of things like our streets and our parks, but the fact that we don't have the capital dollars to keep pace. So even $2.4 million makes a dent in, in our backlog. So Sam, thank you for, um, that vision. There's a few people I would like, because there's a, a number of programs in here that the council supports, I think I just want to call out a few, Mayor, um, so the public understands what we're doing. Um, the Community Garden Initiative, which is a cornerstone, uh, of the City-County Climate Action Plan, calls for 1,000 new gardens by the end of 2012. And the winter bump will be allocating $125,000 for the capital side of that project, which will allow us, I think, to build out an additional six gardens this year. I want to specifically thank Sarah Coats-Huggins, who's at the Parks Bureau, Abby Warren, and Emily Hicks, who've been working, uh, so diligently on our Community Gardens Initiative. Next, um, uh, just to show you that, that some of these things are somewhat mundane but important, um, the $135,000 set aside for East Delta Park will actually help us repair a sewer line that is at risk of breaking. No one, particularly the people that use the, the fields out there, would prefer that we don't have a sewer line break anytime soon. This is not sexy work, but very important. Last year, the, the council made a historic commitment to reinvest in Forest Park and to enhance our stewardship, um, coming out of two reports that issued last year. Part of the winter bump, uh, adds $190,000 to repairing some culverts in Forest Park that are at risk of eroding. Piddick Mansion, as you've heard from Marta Bonus, is one of our crown jewels of our park system. It's in league with the Japanese garden, the Lanzhou Chinese garden, and many other, uh, first-class amenities, but it is 100 years old and in need of repair. So this money will allow us to do some long overdue structural work. Um, it, the, the bump also includes $166,000 for waterfront park turf renovation. Again, it doesn't sound very sexy, but this will allow us, uh, to restore the integrity of, of the grass and the subsurface in, uh, waterfront park. And what makes this unique, Mayor, is that you've challenged us to, to match that from the private sector, dollar for dollar. Project will cost over $320,000. We'll be sitting down with all of the people who permit and use the park to ask for private sector contributions, so we can do that work, um, this year. And finally, we had testimony on the Village Market, and I'd like to acknowledge that from Janus Youth Village today are Amber Baker and Charles Robertson. Could you please stand? Thank you for joining us. Amber and Charles are part of a community coalition that are trying to bring a grocery store to what the mayor and I refer to as a food desert. There are 3,000 people who live at the New Columbia. They do not have a, a grocery store that's accessible, and we've had, uh, some challenges getting commercial activity on the main street of the New Columbia. And last summer, in the main park, there was some, there were some challenges, including a shooting. And so as part of a neighborhood revitalization plan, it both brings healthy food to people who live there, creates jobs for people in the community, but also puts a, a presence on an, on an important street corner, eyes and ears on the park, we think this is an innovative idea, Mayor, that, um, in concert with your larger agenda around addressing food deserts around the city, would give us another tool to provide healthy food to people. So Amber and Charles, thank you for joining us and for your good work. And the 50,000 we'll be contributing today will be matched by contributions from other local government foundations and private sector to allow them this spring to open the, open the, uh, grocery store. So thank you both. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge Fred Cole and the team at Parks, including Zari and, and my team, who've been working on prioritizing some of these asks. We have hundreds of millions of dollars of needs on the capital side, and with your support, colleagues, we'll be going out for a capital bond measure in the next couple of years. But in the short term, you've allowed us, through this winter bump, to fund three of our biggest priorities, uh, which will not only create some, uh, jobs, but will also meet some longstanding needs. So I'm very appreciative for your support. Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Well, as you've heard, uh, during the summations, uh, before the votes, um, the resources, um, that we have invested in the community through this bump come from the previous, um, more conservative, uh, predictions of what our revenues would be. In other words, we cut sooner and earlier than we had to, in part to be able to fund some of these high priority needs, and, uh, almost all of them are matched with community effort or cash. And, uh, so I thank you all for, all my colleagues and, and the great, uh, city team for, um, being very frugal and leveraging what little money we do have for the best benefit of the city. Aye. It's approved. That gets us to, uh, time certain, uh, land use appeal, item number 150.
Tendatively deny appeal of East Portland Neighborhood Organization...
And, uh, thank you Bureau of Financial Planning for your good work. Andrew, Claudio, everybody, please.
Neighborhood Organization Land Use and Transportation Committee, and modify hearing officer's decision to approve with conditions the application of the Portland Water Bureau for amendments to the 2003 Powell Butte Conditional Use Master Plan, environmental review, and adjustments for construction of water system, park facility, and trail improvements at 15800 Southeast Powell Boulevard, LU 10169463, C.U.M.S.E.N.A.D.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. I'm Sylvia Kate with the Bureau of Development Services, and with me today is Stacy Castleberry. We were the assigned planners for this land use review. You'll recall that the council heard the appeal on the Powell Butte Master Plan Amendment, Environmental Review, and Adjustments on February 3rd at 2:00 PM. The council agreed with arguments of the appellant on two points and directed staff to return to council on February 16th with revised findings and two conditions of approval, one to address safety and one to demonstrate that state and federal permits have been obtained prior to building per, permit issuance. These revised findings and conditions of approval are presented in the findings and conclusions document before council. Since that document was sent to you, staff has provided an addendum today which adds more specificity to the condition of approval to develop an emergency notification plan and includes a map of the hazard notification area.
I'd like to move that amendment.
Second. It's been moved and seconded in each council discussion. Do I need another person, or am I good with three?
We're good with three for this.
Okay. Uh, please call the vote on the proposed amendment.
Aye.
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 That's an anxious, sorry.
That is an anxious, uh...
Leonard? Adams?
Aye. Amendment is approved. Uh, can we go with three on the full vote? Yes, okay. Um, uh, unless there is anyone that wishes to testify on item number 150, please call the vote. You do want to testify?
Yeah, I, yeah, I decided to.
Great.
Linda Bauer, um, resident of Pleasant Valley. Um, I, I hope that this map that's being entered into the record is draft, because this property right here is built on a huge fill and will never...
I can't see what you're pointing at.
This property right here is built on a huge fill and will never, ever flood, but it's in, within the boundary, and two properties down is a USGS monitoring system complete with solar and everything, um, and they are not, um, scheduled for notification. So if the draft is map, I mean, if the map is draft, then staff from POMA can bring people in and let people out as they see fit.
So the legislative intent is to, uh, that's illustrative of providing, uh, staff the authority to, um, make the changes as needed in finalizing the notification system so that...
Thank you all very much.
We will, we will over notify to be, to, to err on the safe side.
Thank you, Linda.
Is that a fair?
That's fair. I wanted Tom Carter with the Water Bureau, uh, and this was the starting point, notification. It's not intended to be the ending point, as you noted. POMA will be working with the residents, is my understanding.
And we'll make sure, uh, Linda, you and, um, other expertise, that you'll see it as we finalize it, to make sure that, because you really know this part of the city really well. Ma'am?
Uh, good morning. Catherine Beaumont, City Attorney's Office. May I suggest that for purpose of clarity, purposes of clarity, you have, that what you'd be voting on today would be a motion to, um, deny the appeal, to uphold the hearings officer's decision as modified and with the additional condition that's been proposed, and to adopt the findings that have been presented to you today.
So move.
Thank you.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Unless anyone wants to testify on the motion, that was helpful. Carla, would you please call the vote?
Fritz?
Thank you very much, Catherine Beaumont, the City Attorney's Office. Thank you also to the Water Bureau staff, and thank you to Linda Bauer and the Pleasant Valley Neighborhood Association and others who were here last week. This, uh, it has been a good process, and I appreciate having the appeal before council. As discussed at the hearing, I believe the hearings officer erred in interpreting the appellant's argument as meaning that engineering was the solution to the problem, rather than meeting that portion of the criterion which deals with safety and livability of nearby residential lands. The revised findings and condition now represent a more site-specific measure associated with this development that assists the local residents in addressing an emergency plan for notification should an emergency warrant evacuation. This is a site-specific problem, which I believe is a reasonable response to the issue of the tank failing during an earthquake or other possible emergency, where the tank will need to be rapidly discharged. And I also appreciate the work of the Portland Office of Emergency Management in partnering in the ongoing plan for this, and commit, of course, the resources of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement to that effort. I believe that the findings now represent a more defensible position for the city in regard to meeting the livability criteria associated with the conditional use approval, and this really shows the benefit of the conditional use process in being able to, um, target site-specific solutions that meet everybody's needs. Thank you to all of the staff and everybody involved. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So approved. That gets us to the items that were polled.
We used to, you said we'd take those.
Oh, that's right. That gets us to the regular agenda. I missed a week, and I've lost all memory of process. Um, all right. Can you please read the item for 167? Second reading and call the vote.
Vacate a portion of southeast Bush Street and a portion of southeast 100th Avenue subject to certain conditions and reservations, and designate a portion of Portland parks and recreation property for water facility purposes and assign it to the Portland Water Bureau. Fritz?
Mayor, I actually have an amendment to propose, uh, a new proposed condition of approval for the vacation.
for the vacation, which I've discussed with staff. There was, last week, there was some discussion that there would be four fewer parking spaces available because of the street vacation, and that was of concern to me in being able to support the street vacation. So I propose a condition of approval for the vacation that there will be four park accessible, off-street parking spaces preserved and labeled for park use for use seven days a week. And the future, there will be further discussions on the best location and how to do this, which the staff has asked for, but I believe that the four parking spaces with minimal hours of use during weekdays in the afternoon and on weekends is necessary for approving this vacation.
Has that, has the amendment been circulated?
I have not. I, this, if you want to second this for the purpose of discussion.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded.
This is the first I've seen the amendment. This is a project that was assigned to me by the mayor. It could quite possibly be something I could have considered, but what we heard last week from staff was some flexibility when the project is actually completed to try to identify four or even more spaces. And I'm uncomfortable putting this condition in at this point until the project's completed. We know how many spaces we have, and-
Do you settle for legislative intent, or do you want to vote?
We hear from staff.
Thank you. Dee Walker, Rightaway Acquisition. I've been speaking with Jim Coker, who's a supervising project manager from OMF regarding this this morning, and he would just like to have a little bit of time to work on language so our office and your office is comfortable. Due to a couple of different factors for the parking and how it's being labeled, there is different signs that are going up at the entrance of the parking lot, and he just wants to make sure that it's, it can be used for visitor as well as for park purposes. So I just wanted to convey that today.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to express is I can't support an amendment at all, given staff represented last week, that our intention is to try to identify adequate parking for guests at the park, and that I think it's, it's premature to block out any amount for anybody for any reason at this point until the project's completed. But our, certainly our intent is well articulated last week by staff, is to do the best we can.
Right, and that is what Jim Coker said, that he would like to actually, if, to not do actually anything, no amendment, and actually do it later when it's actually being-
Right. Chair Adams? I'm satisfied, this is a second reading, I'm satisfied, even though I seconded the motion, I intend to vote no, that the legislative intent has been established and that the Commissioner in charge has said he'd be willing to revisit this question. I believe we have enough in the record to proceed to the vote on the underlying ordinance.
As long as we have the legislative intent that four parks, four spaces are necessary to accommodate the lost off-street parking, then I can support the approval as written. And I certainly appreciate Dee and Jim, who've both been very helpful in addressing my concerns, and so I'm happy to have my office work with you on that.
Okay.
But I want to be crystal clear that when the project is done, if for some reason we determine that it's not possible to have four parking spots, there may not be four parking spots. I want to be clear about that. What we will try to do is manage the spots in a way to be able to create four or maybe even more, but I can't commit at this point. I want that to be part of the record. We can't commit to this point to reserve any parking spots for anybody at this point.
Understood. And Jim Coker also had said that he needed to meet with, excuse me, other departments and department heads to determine this. He felt that there was a good chance, but that he also wasn't in a position to make it set right now as well, since there are other departments and other people that had to weigh in on this. But he thought there was a good chance that they could, you know-
And he is, he is one to be loath over promise and is very cautious about, but definitely, I think the legislative intent is clear.
I would like to withdraw my motion, and I also would ask Commissioner Fish, since it's a park use that we're talking about here, that if it turns out that we can't accommodate the parking on the emergency communications site, that you would work with the neighbors to figure out alternative parking for this-
I think, thank you. I would commit to that because I understand that the council's agreeing to make a good-faith effort to reach the aspirational goal you've established without committing us to any particular plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So aspirational goal, our best effort, but we can't, we can't guarantee it. All right, so you've withdrawn your motion, you've withdrawn your second, and we're ready to proceed with the vote as part of a second reading.
Fritz?
Thank you to all the staff who are involved in this, very helpful. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Leonard?
Well, I don't normally take a lot of time to explain my vote, but this, I want to make sure everybody that's listening understands the import of this project. We are, this is the culmination of not only a number of years of work to try to bring together all of the various emergency operations centers that currently exist on the west side of the river. In fact, the Portland Office of Emergency Management rents space on Southwest 6th, I think it is, Southwest 6th downtown. The Police Bureau has its own Emergency Communications Center, Fire has theirs, BOEC has theirs, Water has theirs, PBOT has theirs. This, this action that we're taking actually is, I think, the final act the council needs to take to consolidate this piece of property that is behind BOEC that began with us purchasing houses back there some two or three years back, removing the houses after we purchased them and creating a centralized emergency communications center that will allow for the city to, for the first time, have a central gathering place for the council in emergencies for various entities in the city that have emergencies. And it also includes, was part of the bond that the voters passed in November, allocating $4 million to bring the last finance, financing piece to construct the project there, which has been done very closely with the Bureau of Emergencies Communications under Commissioner Fritz's portfolio. So this, this for me is a very exciting project, one that I'm hoping that the neighborhood finds complimentary to the neighborhood, particularly if we can find ways to open up spaces for people to park, and if there's an opportunity to do more than four, I would want to do that. So thank you all for your support, and I vote aye.
Adams?
Well, it shouldn't go without saying that this wouldn't be before if it wasn't for the work, the leadership, the fundraising, the elbow grease of Commissioner Leonard with going out and putting together a bond measure for the voters to consider, raising money for it, campaigning for it, getting it passed barely, but getting it passed, wins a win.
Win by one.
And in the process of doing that, we're going to be a safer city. And we're going to be a safer city without having to cut other very basic services in the city, in the rest of the government, over the next 10 to 20 years, because we have to have this type of emergency communications. And of course, a lot of those have to be housed in facilities, and that's what we're voting on here today. So change happened, then improve happens, improvements happen sometimes one piece at a time, like a mosaic, but this is actually a very big, good deal for the city of Portland. So thank you, Commissioner Leonard. Aye. Can you please read the title for ordinance, regular, regular ordinance, item number 168?
Establish a city policy discouraging employee use of personal-scented products in the workplace.
Commissioner Amanda Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Anna Canwit from Human Resources. Many people can relate to the constant sneezing, runny nose, and itchy and watery eyes that pester some of us as the transition from winter to spring.
I certainly can right now.
You're like a lozenge.
Yes, I would.
Always a healer.
That's right.
Always a healer.
According to the American Academy of Allergy, Asthma, and Immunology, the A-A-A-A-I-A, goodness gracious, approximately 50 million Americans suffer from some form of allergic disease like hay fever, asthma, and food allergies. Certain chemicals can also cause allergic reactions and asthma flare-ups for some people. Perfumes and fragrances are a combination of chemicals that can contribute to these allergic reactions, especially to those already suffering from allergies, asthma, or chemical sensitivities. And what's interesting about perfumes and fragrances is that they're considered proprietary, so there isn't a listing of what the contents are. I've, I was not aware of this problem until I started working in City Hall. I would have led a sheltered life in hospitals and schools where there's not a lot of fragrance use. And I have come to realize that there are some perfumes that I love to smell, and I can continue to do so, and others that make me cough and unable to breathe, which is a significant impairment in my ability to concentrate on whatever the person who's talking to me is wanting to convey. So the symptoms can vary from upper respiratory problems, headaches, nausea, fatigue, and skin irritation, and these are well documented. We've received some comments about questioning whether this is in fact a real problem that needs to be addressed. I believe it does. And being the Commissioner in charge of wellness, I believe that we need to have a city policy that discourages employees from using personal-scented products while at the same time encouraging them to have a clean and good appearance and professional work attire, et cetera. The, we did hear some feedback from city employees about the discomfort that they hear, that they experience in the workplace, which is what led me to investigate where other jurisdictions and organizations apply similar policies. Portland State University has a similar policy, and the Bureau of Emergency Communications is already fragrance-free because of the particular sensitivities. So I've been working with Anna in Human Resources in developing this administrative policy. Let me be very clear, this rule is not about telling city employees how to manage their personal lives. It's requiring employees to maintain a clear appearance, clean appearance, and we're not asking employees to radically change what they do. We are asking for everyone to be aware of the fact that some employees and citizens who visit us can be harmed by fragrance use. And with that, Anna Canwit will tell us more about the proposed policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Anna Canwit, Assistant Director of the Bureau of Human Resources. The ordinance before you amends a current Human Resources Administrative Rule 4.03 on dress and appearance to add a new section on fragrance in the workplace. As you know, the Bureau of Human Resources is responsible for maintaining, revising, implementing the Human Resources Administrative Rules, which are binding policy on employees. A little bit of background on how we got here, although the Commissioner did an excellent job. Over the past probably two years, I have received feedback from some employees asking why we don't have any statement citywide about the use of fragrances in the workplace. So last summer, we, along with other revisions, I did send out some language to try and raise awareness of the fact, as the Commissioner stated, that allergies to certain fragrances can cause serious health consequences in employees, and a reminder that as an employer, we need to look at reasonably accommodating those issues so that employees can perform the essential functions of their job. We pulled that change at Commissioner Fritz's request so that we could further look at this issue and determine what the best policy would be to bring forward. The research that we've done looking at metro area jurisdictions as well as the state of Oregon shows that while most follow an ADA model of accommodation, very few actually have an express policy, no, no one bans the use of fragrance, but very few have an express policy on this issue. We do have several city bureaus that have workplace rules governing the use of fragrance, but obviously not a citywide policy. So to the extent this is citywide, we are on the cutting edge, at least for the state of Oregon. Again, it's not a ban. It asks employees not to wear colognes, perfumes, aftershave, those products where the only reason you're wearing them is to emit a scent. And also asks that employees avoid strongly-scented personal hygiene products. So we believe this has struck a balance between allowing most employees to continue to use the personal products they enjoy, but also recognizing that this can be a serious health issue for impacted employees. The other thing the policy does is it provides an explicit avenue for employees to come forward if they have an issue. We hope that that will encourage employees to talk to their supervisor if they're suffering from an allergy to fragrance in their work group. And what we found is that employees do need often to have that explicitly stated. If you have a complaint, go to your supervisor. You don't address it, you need to address it with your coworker, your supervisor should take care of the problem. Equally important, if not more important, the reason for a citywide policy to address this issue is even if we have a particular work group, for example, the records division of the Police Bureau is fragrance-free, as those employees move perhaps to other city offices and bureaus conducting their work, they are exposed to fragrances that again can cause damaging reaction. We did send the policy before you out for notice and comment to employees in December, received quite a lot of feedback, I think over 100 responses, which is large, and the majority, I would say about three-quarters at least, were very much in favor of moving in this direction. The last thing, just to bring up, I did send it to you in an email. We have drafted a question-and-answer document that although is not part of the binding policy is an attempt to address some common concerns that employees have here. And so we think that will really help explain to employees why we're doing this and, you know, what they can do to address their concerns or to ensure that their coworkers are not adversely impacted.
Mayor, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Anna, you and I are working on some HR issues, and they, in the past, we've talked about those things that have to be brought forward and changed through ordinance, those things that have to be bargained, and those things that we can just unilaterally implement. Can you tell me again why this comes before as an ordinance and isn't just something that you can, in the ordinary course, implement?
Yes, Commissioner. Actually, let me back up a little bit. Council did delegate to Ken Ross, the Chief Administrative Officer of the Authority, to implement changes to the Human Resources Administrative Rules. We have drawn the line, obviously, where any change impacts compensation issues for employees, which would include, you know, vacation accrual, sick leave accrual, those types of things, because obviously that solely rests with council to determine. We also have kind of a gray area between what we would consider major policy shifts within the city and have tried to bring those forward to council as well. So this is really in that category and had started out with us looking at a ban, which was not well received, and so the decision was to bring this back to council.
Second question is, you've drawn a distinction between an outright ban and, and the wording of this particular policy, which asks employees to refrain. So I guess one way of looking at that is, if you violate a ban, I assume there's, there's usually disciplinary consequences. What is the consequence if you violate a request to refrain from some behavior?
There actually really isn't a consequence unless we have a specific situation in a workplace where we have an employee who's come forward, who has an allergy to fragrances that's causing health issues for them in the workplace. At that point, it does become mandatory for that work group or, you know, whatever the segment of the employee population is. But what I think most importantly this does is we're asking people to really think about it. Wear your perfume at night and on the weekends. You don't need it in the workplace. And so we're really working to raise awareness of this issue.
And if I might just jump in there with a further response to your question. First of all, one of the reasons we're bringing it to council is to publicize that this is the new policy, to make sure that everyone agrees on it on the council. Secondly, that the previous wording or the lack of any wording in the policies before put the burden of proof on the sufferer to get doctor's notes and go through a process which wasn't clear that the supervisor had to do something about it. This policy now says that if somebody reports that they have a sensitivity, it's up to the supervisor to do something about it.
And Commissioner Fritz, I appreciate that distinction because I, I will tell you that I don't usually reveal this to people, but I am heavily allergic to certain kinds of perfume and makeup. So there, when I have guests in my office who have a lot of powder on and makeup and, you know, it could be, I guess, men and women, I mean, just, just people who are, could be frankly an actor. I, I have all kinds of reactions to it. My eyes get red, it affects my membranes, and, and for some reason, I'm allergic.
My eyes get red, it affects my membranes, and for some reason, I'm allergic. I frankly haven't known what the protocol was to raise that with someone because it always felt to me somewhat presumptuous to tell someone, you know? And what I'm understanding then is under this policy, we're creating a climate in which you can feel less inhibited about telling someone that this does cause a problem and then working it out.
Absolutely. And, you know, along with the raising awareness would be talking about signage in offices as we have in some bureaus and offices now that this, because you can create a particular workplaces, fragrance-free if you choose to do that.
But I guess, I just want to, I want, I thank you for your clarification earlier because I think there's been some misunderstanding of this particular ordinance, and it's not a ban, it's not linked any to our disciplinary policy, but is an attempt to raise awareness and create a mechanism where people can talk about any allergies or reactions they have with a coworker, for example.
Correct, although we do encourage employees to go to their supervisor and manager. Most employees, we found, are quite uncomfortable bringing the issue to a coworker. Not everyone, but a lot of people are.
Thanks very much.
Just one final comment before we take testimony. I note that I had discussions with Jeff Baer and the facility staff to examine ways to decrease fragrant cleaning products, and they are looking into that. That was some of the feedback we heard from employees, that why are we not dealing with that issue holistically, and so, in fact, we are.
All right. Who would like to testify?
We have three people signed up. Jason Worster, Barry Joe Stoll, and Jerry Jenkins.
Welcome back to the City Council. We're glad you're here.
Glad to be here.
I think you were first, weren't you?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Please begin.
I'm here to share with my fellow Portlanders.
What's your name first?
Oh, as if you don't know. My name is Jason Worster. I'm here to share with my fellow citizens of Portland what stinks about this confusing, repugnant aroma policy. This reeks of lack of leadership. Instead of providing coaching and professional development to workers who are having an issue, it appears that the city that works is to a point where conversations that city human resources finds tough or embarrassing are resolved with a threat of disciplinary action if one does not change the way they smell. It does not sound a place that I would want to work, as if any of you would hire me, but to help me better understand this knee-jerk wisdom behind this policy, can you clarify the following? How many serious health incidents have occurred over the past five years that has directly contributed to strong scents? Is this policy really masking the lack of cleaning of city buildings due to budget cuts many times over the past year? As I'm sure you know that several OHSU doctors have labeled the Portland building as a sick building. Could this be the real problem, creating asthma and heightened allergies? This appears to be a complaint-based policy that managers and supervisors are saddled with the burden of making sure that each of their direct reports daily pass the sniff test. Where can I find the process for official nose calibration so that one supervisor sniffer is not under or over-registering? Does this include strong natural body odors occurring? And are employees safe from within the confines of a designated stink zone? Then there's the quagmire of an SBD, but I don't want to go there. On a serious note, last year, Dan Saltzman was reported in the Oregonian about how vindictive one of his fellow coworkers is. Is there a review process that ensures that this policy is effective any more than providing mediation skills to empower employees to resolve their own issues? Or is this policy open to abuse? I give a hypothetical example. Samantha is furious at Danielle for standing up and supporting Rose. Samantha decides to be unethical and lie about Danielle's smell. How is Danielle to defend herself against Samantha's harmful, inappropriate tactic? Has anyone checked with risk management to see if there's any vulnerabilities in this By this time, is there any quantifiable scientific procedure for this policy based on parts per million or what actually is strongly scented? Or is it simply a quantitative-based process based on the oral factory of the offender? This is a poorly written policy that is the product of dysfunctional leadership and the same kind of lack of communication highlighted by outside reviewers that just pointed this out on page 339 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Last, I'd like to point out that the city ordinance applies only to city employees. You five are exempt, and that's wrong.
Thank you for your testimony. Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
I guess I was saying.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Stoll.
Yeah, Barry Joe Stoll. Sorry to hear about your allergies. As a person with an invisible disability, I'm heartened to at least see the discussion as we've heard there's some other opinions on how this should be handled. I just wanted to reinforce that, as was mentioned by the staff report, that the ADA does play a role here, and it would also be an employment matter separate to that under the Oregon Civil Rights Legislation, which is interpreted and enforced by the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industries Civil Rights Division. So, there's two different sides of the coin. One is the, just as this being a building that people come into that may have the same allergic reaction, there's the impact on them as this being a government building that would have to have those standards, just like we have ramps or buttons on the elevators that are accessible for people in wheelchairs or the water fountains. So, there's that issue, and I don't want to overrate the importance of the city recognizing that these other agencies have already taken action on this. We have the ADA. I wish, my personal experiences shows how a lot of the disability legislation just is not at all enforced, nor is it enforceable because we really have to have heinous, heinous experiences to draw the lawyers and such into the fray that would actually create the pressures to address these kind of social concerns. I'm glad that we have these infirmities that shows that we can have diversity. We have people with all types of abilities and disabilities, and I'm celebrating the attention to this matter. Just please don't create legislation that you be embarrassed by, and if you could, please rely on the existing state and federal legislation. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Stoll. Jerry?
You. My name is Jerry Jenkins, and I've been an employee with the City of Portland for nearly 20 years, and I'm here today to support the ordinance that Commissioner Fritz has brought forward and that you are reviewing. I just want to share with you my personal experience around the issue of fragrance.
Can you move the mic just a little closer? Thanks.
I'd like to share with you my personal experience around the issue of fragrance. Three years ago, I began to experience severe and life-changing physical ailment, ill. My symptoms were extreme fatigue, chronic dizziness, chronic sort of brain fog, burning in my eyes, burning in my nose, and headaches. And after a lot of research and help, I found out that I was diagnosed with what's called multiple chemical sensitivity. What multiple chemical sensitivity is, is extreme sensitivity to the smallest amount of chemical you could possibly imagine, and I mean the smallest you can imagine, things you would never think you would respond to. If you're diagnosed with this and experienced, you begin to respond to it. So, the reason fragrance is relevant, Commissioner Fritz approached, is that fragrance is made up of chemicals. It's made up of dozens, if not hundreds, of synthetic chemical compounds. So, if you have multiple chemical sensitivity, what I learned is the best way to get well, to regain my health, was to minimize my exposure. That was easy to do at home and in my personal life because I had control of my environment. It was much more difficult to do in the workplace because I had no control over the scent and product that other people wore. But I'm here today to testify to tell you that three years later, I am significantly better, and I don't remember the last time I had brain fog or I had chronic dizziness or even my eyes burned because I work with people. Well, there's two reasons I'm better. One is that it's Portland, Oregon, and we have naturopathic care, excellent naturopathic care, and I found alternative healthcare professionals that told me what to do and I got treatment. The other reason I work with a group that was supportive of me, in the Bureau of Transportation from the PDOT director to my manager to my immediate group, people supported me, and around me, my little corner on the eighth floor of the Portland building became fragrance-free. My peers changed products, they changed habits, and they changed behavior to support helping me get well, and I did get well. It was not a big deal for them, and while people want to make this about something other than healthy air, they want to make it about employees don't communicate with each other, they want to make it about preferences or not, they want to make it about the long arm of government stepping in, it's simply about healthy air. This is an issue of an employer saying to all its employees, "We want to provide you a healthy place to work." In doing so, we give you healthy air, you become healthy employees, you become productive employees, and it's simply good business sense to provide that opportunity for your employees. I could go on with one more example if you'll give me a minute.
Could you give us one more example?
I will. Because there's been discussion about whether or not another city has brought this forward, I want to tell you about an article I read about the city of Detroit where a woman had asked her coworker to quit wearing heavy perfume. She had asthma, not chemical sensitivity, but asthma. And fragrance exacerbates many conditions, asthma, migraines, low-grade irritation to your sinuses. In this case, she asked the coworker. The coworker declined and continued to wear heavy scent. We work in cubicle environments here in the city and I'm sure in Detroit. She asked her supervisors, they laughed at her, they acted as if it was her issue. This is the article I read, maybe some of, they took liberty, but later, finally, she got a lawyer. And under the ADA, she, because asthma, because it was affecting her asthma, which affects her ability to breathe, which affects her ability to live, under ADA, she sued the city of Detroit. She won $100,000, but they also had to implement the policy, the policy she had asked them to implement several years before. Had they simply done that, there would have been no lawsuit, the woman would have been able to work in a healthy environment. And I recognize that this is gentler language, this is not a ban. For me, it's a huge step forward because for me, it's bringing recognition at a public level to an issue that, I've seen the news reports, I've heard the radio commentators, people are making fun of this right and left, but it's a serious, serious issue. It was a life-changing issue for me, and, you know, I am grateful to have my health back, but I still have to stay away from fragrance products, and I have to stay out of meeting rooms where people are heavily scented. So, I really appreciate your effort here, and I appreciate, even though there's a lot of ridicule, I appreciate the attention to it, and I'm hoping that some of that will come forward in a way that the 10% of the population does experience this, will be recognized. It's an invisible disability is what it is.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for testifying. Anyone else wish to testify on this matter? All right. This is a non-emergency, so it moves to a second reading. Any final thoughts from anybody?
Thank you, Jerry in particular, and other courageous employees who have stepped up in either privately or publicly to explain to people what this really means. And it is a serious issue, and it is something that affects the taxpayers of Portland because we need our employees to be at work and functioning as well as they can be, and we need them to not be using the city's health insurance, which is paid for by taxpayers. So, you might think it's a frills-type of ordinance. It isn't, and it's important, even if it's for a few folks. I appreciate Barry Joe's testimony also in that some disabilities are invisible, and they are no less real, they are sometimes more difficult for people to recognize as necessary for accommodations. And this week, we celebrated the one-year anniversary of the Portland Commission on Disability and recognized many of the advances that they've been able to make in just a short time. This is another step forward in that, and we all need to, I believe, be more thoughtful about the ways that we couch others' disabilities and indeed our own. Thank you very much for all of your work, and thank you especially to Anna Canwood.
A clarifying question, if I might. Are we, one of the testifiers said city council is exempt?
Aren't we city employees? I get a paycheck.
We don't think you're exempt.
I didn't think so. So, we're not exempt.
And Mayor, just also, so my understanding is council members are not exempt.
I understand.
This is not a ban, and there is no disciplinary trigger here. This is a request.
Mr. Worster, how do you think we're exempt?
Who's your supervisor?
What's that?
Who is your supervisor?
The taxpayers of Portland.
Okay.
So, two years from now, we get to hear from the thousand.
Okay, that'll be enough of that rudeness. But you, as and the city attorney, agree that we are covered by this rule. I just want to be very clear on the record because it's the city attorney and you that decide.
Yes, and I think we all, the city attorney and Bureau of Human Resources agree, and I think all the elected officials agree, that you follow the binding Human Resources policies that are binding on all city employees. I think the distinction here that is causing some trouble is the fact that there is no discipline process, obviously, for you because you report to the voters. You're accountable to the voters as opposed to, you know, those of us who are accountable to you or employees who are accountable to their supervisors.
But this does give the private right of action if we are out of compliance, an employee could bring an action against a city council member.
Absolutely, because again, it's been discussed with the Americans with Disabilities Act does govern these types of issues, health issues, and we're required to make accommodations.
And if I could just make a comment, I have had the opportunity to work with Jerry for however many years I've been here, and I didn't know that you suffered from this disability, but for those of you that don't know Jerry, she is as smart and as level-headed and as tough, hard-working employee as you will ever find. She is the furthest thing from what anyone could possibly describe as a whiner, weak, a complainer, a troublemaker, nothing like that whatsoever. So, you know, frankly, Jerry, your testimony today and just your personal story is very surprising and puts a human face on it, in the face of a lot of ridicule, and I really appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you for your kind words.
All right, this moves to a second reading next week. Can you please read the title for procurement report, item number 169?
Except bid of Stellar J Corporation for the Columbia Boulevard Wastewater Treatment Plant chemically-enhanced primary treatment for $2,450,358.
Good morning, Ms. Moody.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Christine Moody, Procurement Services. You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Stellar J Corporation in the amount of $2,450,358. The city identified eight divisions of work for potential minority, women, and emerging small business subcontracting opportunities. Subcontracting participation on this project at bid time was 13.1%, with work being performed in the areas of painting, insulation, masonry survey, concrete, cutting, and trucking. Since the bids have closed, Stellar J has committed to using a women-owned business for some of the HVAC work, which brings their participation level up to 15.7% on this project. They are also looking for additional opportunities in underground piping and concrete work. I'll turn this back over to council if there are any questions regarding the bidding process. Scott Gibson from BES is here to answer any technical questions, and Bob Kinghorn from Stellar J is also here if you have any questions of the contractor.
What's the headquarters, where's the headquarters of Stellar J?
The headquarters of Stellar J? I'll ask Bob to come up here.
What's that? Washington.
Great. And this is obviously with the bid in hand, this is a high-confidence transaction, right?
This is correct.
Not to exceed. Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, I'll accept a motion to accept the procurement report.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the procurement report. Carla, can you please call the vote on the motion?
Fritz?
Thank you again for your good work. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. 169 is approved. Can you please read the title and call the vote for second reading, item number 170?
Authorize a contract and provide payment for construction of the Stark Inflow Control
Authorize a contract and provide payment for construction of the Stark Inflow Controls Project, number E10003.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
170 is approved, can you please read the title for resolution item number 170?
171?
Sorry, 171.
Authorize a temporary operating loan from the Bancroft Bond Interest and Sinking Fund to the Development Services Operating Fund to provide interim funding.
Commissioner Randy Leonard.
Director Paul Scarlett. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioner members. Paul Scarlett, Bureau of Development Services Director. I'm this morning in front of you asking for a loan, a re-loan of a temporary operating loan from the Bancroft Bond Interest and Sinking Fund. The reason we're asking for this loan is a number of reasons. Quick background, March of 2010, almost a year ago, we asked for a loan to provide us the opportunity to essentially navigate the unpredictable aspects of our finances, and the construction activities, the economic crisis, the volatility, the uncertainty. We needed a loan to ensure that we were not, that we would be able to operate at cash flow, and we wanted to make sure that in case we were not able to meet cost recovery, we'd have a loan to shore up any one day or one month of operating expenses. We're pleased to share with you that based on the major actions we took to balance our budgets, which included letting go, cutting more than 150 staff, we're in a position now that we're now operating at cost recovery, and have seen that over the last few months. However, there are times when construction activities vary, and we may not meet cost recovery.
Just cash flow management?
Cash flow management. Our proposal is, we are in a position right now to repay the loan that we borrowed last year, March, and given the uncertainty of what will happen in the out months, right now, things are steady, but it's, we don't have the necessary cushion to feel comfortable enough to not have a backup system, if you will, at loan. And so we're asking for the ability to pay back the loan, along with the interest that's been accrued effective today, and would ask for a re-loan would be on the books, or at least take effect tomorrow, February 17th. That would provide us the opportunity to sort of bridge the gap between this financial or fiscal year, which as the requirement for loan is to be paid by the end of the fiscal year, so June 30th, 2011, and we're wanting to pay it back now, we would have a loan on the books that would be, again, required to be paid the end of the fiscal year, so that would be June 30th of 2012. It really is a, for us, we have determined a prudent financial measure to have in place to allow us to mitigate for any unforeseen financial shortfalls. That's essentially the gist of it. We are feeling very confident that based on projections and the economic recovery, which we're seeing some slight indication, and anticipate come spring and summer, our bureau will be in a position to operate at a financial cost-recovery basis, on a regular basis, and into the future. However, as you know, over the last two years, there's been huge fluctuations in the economy, so we just want to have a loan on hand in case some of these things are not realized. But we anticipate in the out years not having to have another loan, that we'll be in a better financial situation to rely independently on our own operating revenues, which is dependent mostly on permit fees, and there is a direct relation to construction activities, which is anticipated to be picked up in the next several years.
Your answer, I have a few questions if I could.
Yep.
Paul, for the benefit of people who are listening, could you describe what the Bancroft Bond Interest and Sinking Fund is and what the current balance is in the fund?
Maybe I can ask Denise.
Or it might be, or Andrew Scott.
Yeah, I know it is, we're able to repay it.
Someone could give us a Bancroft 101.
That'd be great, thanks.
Morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The projected ending fund balance in this fund as of the end of this current fiscal year will be about $11.8 million.
And what's the source of those funds?
The source of funds are monies that are paid in on assessment contract payments that are no, where the bonds, the associated bonds have been paid off previously, and now those assessment payments are coming in and go into the reserve account.
And do we have any city protocols or guidelines or rules on what we can and cannot do with that money?
We, it's governed by charter. We've written a very recent memo covering this subject where we are recommending that the fund not be further reduced at this time, however, we approach this from the standpoint that a loan is different from a transfer out of the fund. So the, our position, right, is that this loan is fine, if it were a transfer out of permanent reduction in the fund balance, we have some concerns about the ongoing level, so.
So the way this is described, the loan is to be repaid and then a new loan issued, so it begs the question, why not just roll over the existing loan an additional year?
Essentially, that, well, under budget law, I believe we have to repay it in this year and then go through the process of re-loning it.
Effectively, that's what you'd be doing.
Exactly, yep.
And given what Director Scarlett has said is the need for this money, which is to provide a cushion with some uncertainty in your projections, why a loan and not, let's say, a line of credit? Why take the whole amount versus setting up a de facto line of credit and using what you might need?
We consulted with OMF as to the different options, and this was the one that was recommended with you.
With the line of credit, Denise Kline, Bureau of Development Services. Excuse me. With a line of credit, there is a gap in terms of when we would receive funds, so for a line of credit, we would need to expend funds, pull together documentation, submit that documentation, and then receive reimbursement for that, and there's a four-to-six-or-so-week gap between the time that the funds are spent and the time the funds are reimbursed. So that would actually contribute even more to cash flow issues than what we are requesting here with a loan.
And is the security for this loan just essentially a pledge against future revenues that you receive from permits?
Yes, it would be repaid through the revenues that's generated through permitted activities.
And Paul, my final question is, have you projected in your budgeting for the next year the possibility that a school bond measure is successful, and there are substantial permits and fees generated from that particular, the Portland Public Schools bond effort?
I'm not sure I can answer to that level of details we have, based on projection in the meeting with economists, that it will be 3% to 4% growth increase in activities that could accommodate, I did meet with the school district director, who's also planning on some of these projects.
The documents that I think the mayor and I've seen, you know, they've done some projections off of what is a half-billion dollars' worth of construction generated in fees and permits and SDCs and...
Anything above and beyond would be great. We take a very conservative approach projecting, and of course, that's contingent upon voter approval, would not be part of our analysis, and that would just add, as Paul just alluded to, it would just be way to the positive if that came to fruition.
I guess my final question, thank you for the clarity in your answers, the risk here?
I think the risk here is if we don't get the kind of recovery that creates the cash flow that the bureau is expecting, it could be a need down the road to reassess this loan. I should also point out, we will be coming back in a couple of weeks with the line of credit request for the purchase of the permit tracking system as well.
Schedule for next week, Wednesday, I believe.
So it also, yeah, go ahead.
What's the interest rate on the loan?
The interest rate on the internal loan is set at the city's investment portfolio yield, so there's no, there's no give-up in yield either side. So right now, the loan rate would be a little bit in excess of a half a percent, but it's tied to the city's investment portfolio yield.
And where did the money, revenues come from to pay back this one point, the first 1.5 million?
Each day, money comes in through construction activities, permitted activities.
Could I get a breakdown of what those revenues are?
On a monthly basis, it's, we have to bring in at least $2.1 million to match our expenses, that's happening now, and we have currently about 700, five to 700,000 in reserve. We continue to monitor that closely, but all of our activities is dependent on construction activities, some lean collections. We can provide you a breakdown, not sure what level you would like.
I could also add to that, that the 1.5 million was put in our account and was drawn down a couple of times, but that money has, is in our account, is in our reserve right now.
So we currently have 1.5 in that reserve?
That's right, more than that, right.
So I'm looking at information the DRAQ was given, the Development Readvisory Committee, and it seems like staffing percentage change is minus 7% over the last year, but many of the other indicators, except for enforcement revenues, are down way more than that. So I'm getting, I'd like some more information on how your cash flow is working and on those projections.
I'm not sure what I'd ask, and I had to be a little bit careful about requests from offices to BDS. Because of the decrease in revenues and cut in staffing, you would think that if we laid over half the people, the workload dropped by half, and the revenue even dropped more than that, but that's not the case, because we still get a lot of permits, they're just for low values. So I'm going to request of you, Commissioner Fritz, and anybody who wants to ask questions, please send them to my office first, to the extent Sarah, who's my liaison, can answer them, I will have her do it. As a last resort, I call on the staff to do it, because they are, they are working oftentimes weekends and evenings, just to keep up with their current workload. So if you have specific requests for information, we may have it to give to you in our office. If not, we will get it from them and then forward it to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to testify on resolution item number 171?
No one signed up.
Please call the vote on item 171.
Fritz?
I appreciate your diligent work, and I do recognize that you're still battling the adversity of the recession, and I'll be in touch with Commissioner Leonard to get some more information in the meantime. I'm glad that you have the 1.5 to pay back, and it seems reasonable to have that cushion for your ongoing operations, aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Thank you, Paul, and your whole team for managing us through this crisis, and particularly OMF for stepping in and helping us, it's been a lifesaver, aye.
Adams?
Aye, thank you.
Approved. Can you please read the title for emergency ordinance, item number 156?
Authorize agreement with Paragrine Sports LLC for usage of parking spaces in a surface lot.
Hi. Can you give us an overview of what 156 is?
Surely, I'm Ruth Lane with the Bureau of Transportation, and it's simply an agreement to use parking spaces in a surface lot. The lot is owned by TriMet and operated by the city. I manage the lot, it's for 25 spaces at the current monthly rate.
Any other, any questions from council? This is an emergency ordinance, so I need one more vote. Anyone wish to testify on 156? Please come forward.
Thank you, my name is Jason Worster. About, almost three years ago, working on Commissioner Fritz's campaign, I learned about what emergency ordinances were and the consent agenda. From reviewing emergency ordinance 156, I see that the need of the emergency is based on signage being placed up by April 1st. I don't agree that's an appropriate use of the emergency ordinance. Furthermore, this parking spot, or parking lot, should I say, comprises about half a block at 18th and Salmon for Merritt Paulson and Paragone. It's being given away at the rate of about $5 per day per spot. I don't think that is a realistic price for someone to have exclusive rights for 25 parking spots of prime space next to PG Park at that rate. So I ask that this be further reviewed to see if the monthly rate for this lot, for 25 spots, for about $5 a day, might not be appropriate, and if the city taxpayers are not getting the maximum yield off of such a prime piece of property. As we know, parking is probably one of the hardest things to do in that part of town. I appreciate you revisiting this and also understanding my dismay at the use of an emergency ordinance and placing something like this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. So just to make sure I understood your presentation, this is, this is property owned by TriMet, who has contracted with us to manage it, and you are the manager?
I am, it's...
And it's, the cost per spot is set by market?
It's just a market area study that we do pretty much annually, and it's, that use is not going to be for PG E Park events, that's separate, this is just for weekdays.
So it's for the rehabilitation center?
Yes.
Okay.
So the monthly rate is 150?
110.
110.
That's Monday through Friday, eight to six, just, that's what the permits are in that, in that lot, it's for businesses in the lot.
So that, for example, is above what you would pay for parking at the lot that's in the River District next to, from off the... As your...
Our garage?
Our garage.
Yep.
That advertises, I think, $90 to $95, and so less than the full freight at a number of downtown lots that are closer to 150 or more. So this rate was arrived at by looking at using it five days, not seven days, and then based on a market study?
Right, and it's not downtown, it's not, you know, it's only during commuter hours, and it's on the other side of the freeway.
So it's intended to, as was alluded to in earlier agreements and conversations, this was part of the overall deal, but they had to do it at market rate, but the rehabilitation clinic, which is on that side of PG Park, needs access to parking. I'm pleased to see this move forward, because I've also had calls from some of the businesses around the new rehabilitation center that are afraid that the rehabilitation center clients will crowd out their customers, so. Any additional discussion? All right, Carla, would you please call the vote on item number 156?
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
156 is approved, we just have one more. Is 158, does it need to be amended?
Yes.
Okay, can you come forward, we'll do this really fast, if we can?
158, authorize the Bureau of Transportation to execute a temporary construction easement with Multnomah County, a political subdivision of the state of Oregon, as part of the St. John's pedestrian freight project.
So what is the amendment that needs to be moved?
I'm Marty Maloney with the Bureau of Transportation, right away, and basically, the amendment that needs to be in place in the outline, the ordinance would be an obligations agreement, the Multnomah County is requiring putting into the easement itself, so it's just changing the ease of it in the ordinance, so nothing else has changed.
The change is at the request of Multnomah County Legal Department?
Exactly.
Okay, I move it.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion on it?
Do I have it in writing?
Oh, yeah, oh, you know, I'm not sure, but I have...
Those were distributed in your packet?
They were, okay, thank you.
Okay.
And my staff has reviewed it? No?
Additional discussion? Can you please call the vote on the motion to amend? Can you please call the vote on the motion to amend?
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Does anyone wish to testify on item 158? Can you please call the vote on the amended item 158?
Fritz?
Thank you for your diligence. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Approved. We're in recess till 2:00 p.m.